Call this work session for the 23, 20, 23, 24 budget to order. A little bit of house clean, there will be no public comments tonight or public discussion. However, if there's a question arises that has to do with a particular department and they are represented here, then I will call on that department head or representative to answer any questions that you may have. So now we're into the discussion of the proposed, proposed budget. Any questions or comments about the budget? Anything to bring up about the budget?
Are you going closed after this? Well, I have some questions, Val. Did you get those down? Sorry, I didn't bring my computer down.
I did, you went on the presentation.
We're almost there.
I don't think we've ever had anything that bad in our policy.
You're trying to run that right straight through.
Val, do you want to click through?
Yeah.
And I can go back if you need me to just.
I've been pushing around for an hour and a half.
But mine won't be fast, so.
Is it going to go?
As we've learned, you can't. West ends are.
Okay, so just kind of where we are. I know one of the questions that Councilwoman Hicks asked last week was what are potential changes? Some of those are in the revenues and I'll talk about those in a minute. And Councilman Showalter sent a question about the COLA and the merit. We wanted to talk about solid waste recycling fees and community support and then what our next steps are. So I'll jump into what Councilman Showalter asked first. This was the COLA merit question that he sent. What he was asking was the 10-year history of what our COLA percentage increases were. And then the next column is what were the prorated dollars in the budget for that year? And then what was the amount for merit, which has always been the 2%? And then what is the prorated dollars that were put in the budget for that? And then the final column is what does it cost? What did it cost in each year for each percent, whether it's COLA or merit? What does 1% equate to? So that's kind of that chart. I did email that out to everybody, so you have it to study in more fine detail since there's a lot of numbers on this page. But included in the proposed budget was a 5% COLA and a 2% merit. And then the final column is just, we didn't actually do COLA and merit back in 2013 and 2014. We did a 2% one-time bonus then. I think our merit plan and that whole compensation plan went into effect in 2015. And then there to the right, we have when we awarded those. So early on, we were doing the COLAs in July and the merits in January. And then we moved to October, November timeframe to do those in most years since then. And then in '23, we did the COLA kind of odd because we were working on the '23 budget. And we had a COLA in there and we went ahead and implemented it in May of October of 2022. So we actually got that COLA before FY '23, but that was kind of the plan. That's where we are on COLA and merit.
I guess, if you see, and look, the merit's usually 2% across the board, right? All the way through. So what's the biggest jump between 2020 and 2021 to? What was the, why did we go all, you know, we did five times what we usually do. And then, of course, we're following up this year. What was the thinking behind that?
The 5%?
Yeah, you see COLAs, 1%, 1%, 1%, 1%, 1%. And then in 2022.
I guess part of the reason, if you notice the percent change in the Consumer Price Index from '21 to '22, it was an 8% increase. That's essentially kind of a cost of living increase, basically. That's Southern Urban Consumer Price Index, what we're considered.
Right, we hear, Randy, we hear about that increase. I remember hearing that back in 2009 when I came on council, Consumer Price Index. So I'm curious to see why it's always extended and it might be me the only one who cares about this. I do feel like slow and steady always wins the race when it comes to. At least the human resource that we have where we, I do agree with giving bonuses, but $800,000 and would presume again this year, last year, $720,000 overall. And do know these range anywhere from, it's just not 7%. They range anywhere from 7% to 9%. Some individuals want that 9%. Do think that's a little much on the COLA.
I kind of feel a lot, too. I know that one of my biggest concerns in the last year was when we had employees that were making under $15 an hour. And then obviously, we worked really hard on making sure that anybody that was working for the town was making a buck of them. And then we really worked on making sure that anybody that was, you know, because we're having security time and whatever problems and retention problems, that we worked really hard in trying to make sure that that percentage was higher. But I kind of agree with you as far as like the percentage. I mean, for somebody that's making, you know, $15 an hour, $18 an hour, that may not mean, mean a lot of percentage increase. You know, it may just be a dollar here, a dollar there, but it's not a big increase. But when you think about the whole picture, it's definitely a lot of money. Mostly when, I really look at the income revenues that we'll be making, accounting grants is under, I still believe it's around $60 million, right, Valerie? That doesn't include our expenses, not counting our revenue for the town, our full revenue for the town.
Uh, well, depends on.
Not counting the grants that we make.
Well, for the general fund, it's around $37, $38 million for the general fund. And then you have the water and sewer fund. Water fund's around 11 and a half to 12 million off the top of my head. And stormwater's around $2 million.
I mean, it's pretty much, it's over 1% if I'm not wrong of, you know, the whole increase.
I thought part of the rationale and part is also to be, to remain competitive with our neighboring localities.
Yes, I believe Montgomery County's proposing a 7% COLA and Blacksburg's proposing a 5% COLA and 2% step. I think Radford's, not sure about Radford, Big Flask is using 7%. I can get.
And the state is doing, what, 7%?
State's proposing 7%.
Well, I personally don't have a problem with that. I mean, everything's going up in living, because living's going up, you know? Even like, well, the money we get, not us council, but retirees or whatever, it does increase. So personally, I have no problem with 5%.
Well, and I think that back in 20, 20 and 21 is when we started losing employees. And now I can see that we're on an upward trend of being able to recruit employees. I know Jim, your last count, you were at one time 36 down and now you're what, 20 something down?
25.
25? So, you know, we picked up 11 of people. What I, what my thought would be is, you know, if we can continue to track like that, then, you know, within a year, year and a half, we could, you know, be down under 20, even down to 15 depending. So, I mean, but, but it's all in presenting a total package to the employees. And it keeps the employees that are here happy and it keeps the long-term employees happy. Because it doesn't matter whether you've been here for two weeks or whether you've been here for 25 years. Cost of living went up, can't see that far, but I think it's 6% or 8%.
8.6.
8.6%. So even if we grant them a 5% COLA, they're still losing 3% of what their dollars can buy. Now, into the raises, I mean, it's a flat 2%. But that doesn't necessarily mean that everybody's going to get a raise. Some will get a little more than the 2%. And we've explained that sliding scale several times about, you know, it's, it is a merit increase. It's not a just, okay, here's another 2% for showing up. It is a merit increase, so you earn your increase. And I would venture to say that in most departments, there'll be some that might get more and then there'll be some that may not because of performance, even get a raise.
So employees that have only been here two weeks, do they get a COLA?
If they'd only been here two weeks, they would get a COLA.
They would.
And it moves the entire, the entire pay range. And it moves all employees and all pay ranges.
With the entry level here, in the past, I would say seven years, we've done two payroll studies to bring our employee, two within the past seven years. When we pay the third party to come in and recommend, here's what each level should be at, right? So it's not really retention level. If you hire somebody, you're hiring them on what council decided years ago on what this person should start to make, right?
To so large degree, yes, we've got basically the.
So this really doesn't have any effect on.
And we have, have a market rate. We'll basically hire in at the entry level unless, unless experience dictates that they'd be hired in up to market, basically.
Right, which we did two separate studies within a five-year period to do that. And of course, we've been doing the right thing with public works by increasing pay, making overtime more available to achieve. But when it comes to recruitment, this really doesn't have anything to do with this.
I guess you could say that the 5% COLA moving all the pay ranges, pay scales, does have an impact.
Do you think this is viable every year?
If, probably not, but I don't think our cost of living's going to be 8.6% increase every year either.
About a few years in a row. You gave a bonus that one year with an increase.
That was out of COLA, that was out of our money, wasn't it?
It was.
But it's still money that he wants.
May have been used elsewhere.
It could be used for projects, capital projects.
We chose to do it on bonus.
I'm not saying to eliminate them altogether. I know that's what, you know, I guess the counter is, but. To reduce it to save several hundred thousand dollars. Because our revenue, what is it called? We have to keep our revenues over 30.
So the fund balance policy?
For users who are right, who are getting right at the threshold at the low end.
We're at the bottom of the threshold right now as the budget's presented. I did make some adjustments to revenue based on what our actual receipts were for this current year. So like B-poll, the numbers were better than what we had in the budget as proposed, expected to receive. So we bumped some of those numbers up, which is improving that percentage somewhat. I think we're at 32 with the changes that we know we have to make.
Wasn't it supposed to be around 35% though?
You know, I'm happiest if it's around 35%, but it doesn't have to be there. Our policy says between 30 and 25?
30 to 40.
30 to 40.
Then after 40, after we assign it to some, to the assigned fund balance.
I mean, 2% is how much? What will that 2% be, what does it equal to?
200, yeah.
Or 2% COLA, it's 200.
So right now, with the way you have the budget, right now it'll be 32%. But if we were to just change that percentage to only be 4% increase or 3% increase for this year, for COLA, you suggest that we'll probably have about $33 million on the general, on the balance thing?
Your figure is including payment of the COLA, is that correct?
Yeah.
I'd make it fast, so we've already heard from Sam and Ken. Mike, if you have to break a tie, which I doubt that's going to happen, and Casey, but.
So, anybody, I'll take it from here. Anybody else have comments on it, positive or supporting?
I think if this is cost of living increase that our surrounding neighbors are doing, we really have to match that. If we don't, I think we're going to lose employees, our surrounding areas. The right thing to do is to get our employees up to the cost of living increases we can. It's still not exact, but it's.
Oh, but here is the concern that I have regarding this. Like, I know that I want to pay our employees really well. And it has always been well-known, if you want the best benefits, if you want the best, you know, job, always go and work for government. And I hope it continues to be that way, but at the same time, we have businesses in the town that have to create an income and that also have to pay employees. So every time we increase our payroll, you know, the chances are, we're not being competitive. We're actually winning the race every time for employees. And I think our cost of, you know, what we pay our employees will be very similar to what other people are paying in the industry. Because the reality is that you'll never be able to compete with government, obviously, because we get a lot more benefits here. There is the insurance benefit is just absolutely greater in many levels. You know, retirement and all this other stuff that most employees don't have, poor employees have.
So in answer to that, what I heard Henry say a few minutes ago was that we did two studies to make sure that we matched pay for our employees to be there. So we've already done that, that work to make sure that we're not overpaying them. And I tend to agree, if the cost of living is 8.6, I don't have hurt over the 5% COLA. And, and I'm here to tell you, there's enough people out here that need jobs that, you know, if they either want to come work, they can come work for the town or go find a job. Because there's plenty of, plenty of jobs out there. So I'm, I'm okay with 5%.
So I'm seeing it, so at least four in approval?
I'm excited about four. I think four is right.
Four, four people approving. I don't know what you're for, you're talking about, are you for the?
I was just saying 4% increase.
Are you for or against cost of living increase?
At 5%.
At 5%.
I would like a 4%, but that's just me.
Mike, it's not about the cost of living increase.
But if you guys, it's not the cost of.
That's pretty good, that's 5%.
Because that would be 10%. You talk about the cost of living, what was the cost of living in Florida for the two years?
I don't think anybody here said anything about cutting that here out.
13.7 would be the cost of living for the two years.
Was it, was it 8.5 every year?
No, it was 5.1 the year before and 8.6 last year. So you're talking, you're talking 13.7 and so we raised it 10.
I'm not sure you can either, so.
We're still 3% behind what the two years worth of cost of, or.
So 3%?
CPI. We're still 3% behind CPI.
So I guess I have confirmation from four council members that they would support in the budget a 5% cost of living increase.
I guess we'll go with 4.
So you support it?
Yes.
It's 5%, okay. Very good. Val, you had some other projections and things to talk about?
So revenues, I think I kind of mentioned that B-poll numbers were up a little higher for this year. So I've adjusted those revenue numbers in the estimated to receive to be closer to what we're having as actual experience. And so that brought the numbers up a little bit. And then a couple other areas where it looks like our collections are going to be much higher than what we anticipated. So that's pretty much the only changes we've made in the revenue numbers other than, you know, the increases that we've talked about for water and tax that were already built into the proposed budget.
We still have import in, I'll go with some home console, right?
Correct, but they are presented as a part of the budget. We've had our public hearing on the tax increase. We had the public hearing on the water increases. We'll have one more for the outside rate of being 200% for, because we missed it in the first ad on the sewer rate. We had it on the water rate, but we didn't have it on the sewer rate. So we'll have to have that public hearing again. That will be June 13th. And then the budget hearing would also be that night. And then the budget could be approved seven days later, but the next meeting is June 27th.
Most likely we'll call a special meeting.
Good, you can't vote on it before, seven days after the public hearing.
I understand that, understand that. But we could the following week, in between council meetings, we could hold a special meeting to vote on the budget.
You could.
We most likely will, hopefully.
So hold on, if you, if you advertise it, has it been advertised yet or not yet?
Yes.
So if it's been advertised.
Oh, the budget, the budget has not been advertised, yes.
For the water increase and the food increase.
Yes, that's all been advertised.
And that's going to be for what day again?
The water and sewer, the water increases for in-town, that was last meeting, is when we had the public hearing. And for the tax increase, was last meeting. The only thing we missed was the 200% for outside rates. We'll have that public hearing on the 13th. Because we're going from 150% of inside rates to 200%.
How many days do you have to advertise that already again? Why can't we have that next week on the 23rd?
Sorry, what's the question?
We're still in May, we're on the 16th day. We have a town council meeting on the 23rd next week. Why don't we have that meeting on the 23rd?
Oh, because it has to be advertised, the increases have to be advertised 21 days before and at least seven days, 14 days before. So to get the lead time on the advertising, to have it out in the paper and whatnot, the earliest we could hold the public hearing is June 13th.
On, you're not going to pull up the screen on revenues, I don't think.
No, no.
But, you know, those of us that have, have been on council for a while, and I guess that's right now, Henry and I and Sam, I think we all know that when, when we get a budget, it is a very conservative budget. Think that, and I applaud that because, you know, it's, it's easier to come to the end of the budget cycle and find out, well, we've made a little bit more money, or more money on meals and lodging and more money that we have to expand or to go into the reserve account. And I think that's a very, to me, I commend the entire staff, department heads and all, for taking this approach. And anyway, we've been through some pretty heavy budget fiascos in the past, but this seems to be working, in my estimation, fairly well. So, thank you.
I got a question about revenues. So we advertise, so if we went to like a net zero from real estate, what's the difference in what we're advertising going to net zero as a couple hundred thousand or 200,000, 300,000? Because what's going to happen, the real estate taxes, even though, you know, it's the old nutshell game, even though we dropped the real estate taxes, people are still going to be paying more in the real estate tax. But what are we, what's the difference between what we advertise and if we're net zero, what's the challenge?
About 300, about. Stole my mouth. I didn't, Randy told me. Hey, hey, it's a little fuzzy humor here.
I was going to look the number up, but.
Oh. Okay. I don't know if we can. Or not.
Just some cover sheet from the ones that I did.
Yeah, I hit my head in that. So that was, then the only other thing we haven't talked about is the solid waste and recycling fee because of the increase in solid waste collection fees. Randy had mentioned last meeting, I think, that we were wondering about increasing the solid waste fee by dollars.
Personally feel like even with the, and I know I wasn't comfortable when the recycle thing happened, I think it should actually be voluntary instead of being made to have a standard. And that's just my first question, because we're not paid for that trash can and you were not obligated. This makes us obligated to everybody to pay for their recycling work. Now, will it make a big difference if we didn't have the recycling fees? How much more money do we have to pay for all the waste?
As we were at 17, then we basically added an additional five when we added the recycling.
But there is not an option right now not to have it.
That's correct.
You can, you can like not get your trash.
Well, you, you, yes, you can. You can like not to have town collection.
But you have to pay for it.
So I have to pay for it?
You have to pay for it.
You don't have to pay for it, you don't get it.
Only if you get enough.
But you have to get trash and recycle, you cannot just get trash.
I think she, there's two different things going on. I think she, she's talking about reselling.
You are not, you are not obligated to get town garbage and recycling collection service. So therefore, you don't have to pay for it if you don't want to have it. That would mean you need to do something on your own with your own garbage, whether it's take it to the green boxes in the county or whatever.
Or hire a contractor.
Yes, or hire a contractor.
Do you think that there is an option to, if there was? I know for the people that want recycle, they can have recycle. And for the other ones that don't have recycle, is there any way possible to ever eliminate that? And will the problems be everywhere to do such a thing?
That was the decision and the recommendation from the Solid Waste Committee back when we went to doing it. I think the thought was that we wanted people to recycle. So we wanted to basically kind of require recycling service with the garbage service.
But we also do, if you do some math, when we, when we went away with, when we did away with the recycle bins and we implemented the recycled trash cans, we, the solid waste that we paid for, we eliminated some 60% of recycled materials that was in solid waste that we were paying to, to be dumped. So.
Instead, we're getting paid a little something for it.
So now by doing it the way we're doing it, we are, we're recycling more, getting money back in return out of the recycling because we're eliminating all, we're eliminating 60-some percent of what people were just putting in their regular trash can.
But it's still an additional cost to the, that's my question. I mean, it's great to have it, don't get me wrong.
Okay, and we're, and we're talking about not raising the rate $2, $1 for recycling, $1 for trash.
$1 overall.
We're talking, instead of $22, it's going to cost me $23.
Correct.
Is all we're saying, correct?
Yes.
Now, the recycling company, how much do we actually make a year from them? Do we make money from them on every can or is that just?
We're barely over breakeven, barely.
And I think if you got into this.
But if you didn't recycle it, you'd pay for it as.
As solid waste fee.
Solid waste, and I think, I think what you'll see now, or should that happen? When you drive through the neighborhoods, and I drive through my own, and I see every, every week, I see green trash cans that are actually stacked a little bit above, there's nothing beside. And then the next week, I see a full recycling bin and a full trash bin. So if you do away with the recycling, then all you're going to see, I think you're going to end up with seeing more trash set out in the neighborhood beside the trash cans, not being picked up. The birds are going to spread it around. So for every, you know, those are 50, 50 gallon, no, 90 gallon cans, is it?
Correct.
96, so.
Do they have the, I know that we have a smaller trash can available for people at the same rate, but do they have that availability for recycle stuff though?
Well, you have to offer 65 for recycling. It's smaller than the 96 and a little bit bigger than the 48 we offer. We don't have too many customers that have 48 gallons.
Because the recycling fee. Because of the recycling fees, solid waste fees.
Well, it's not gonna be a dollar and a dollar like Tim was saying, you took one dollar for it.
Correct.
We introduced support. You know, we had a, a group of, I think, nine or ten people speak at council last week, urging council to reconsider funding the museum. I've also had eight, eight emails from other citizens that were not, well, seven, that were not at that meeting, also encouraging us to do so. I had a letter of, I had one from Diane Akers, Paula Austin, Emily Beard, um, Deb Travis in, in double A C P, Charlie White-Scarver, and Steve Huppert, asking us to consider reconsider funding the museum at ten thousand dollars. So is there an interest from council to consider refunding the museum at ten thousand dollars?
I have an interest in doing that. I also think we should consider reconsider the children's museum. I don't think anybody spoke, because they don't know they have that much support. But they bring in tremendous amount of traffic into uptown. They provide free entrance entry for children. They have thirty-six businesses. They had twenty-eight thousand people attend, uh, their facility last year. Gave them twenty-five thousand dollars last year. I just don't understand why we gave them twenty-five thousand dollars last year. And then Montgomery Museum, eighteen dollars, eighteen thousand dollars last year, and they increased the amount of traffic that they bring into uptown and downtown, and this year, we said they were worth zero dollars. I don't, I, I legitimately don't understand the difference. The benefits increase.
So I think, well, I'm sorry, my glasses are good, but they're not that good. I think the original request was at a hundred and thirty, a hundred and twenty thousand, and we agreed to fund ninety, or something along that line. We cut thirty, thirty thousand out, which was the museum, Wonder Universe, and ten thousand dollars from someone that we had, had never applied before, which, it doesn't bother me one way or another. So, I mean, I think it, I think it gives council a black eye in that we are, you know, cutting two of the, probably the most drawing cards we have in town. Save twenty grand. Out of a thirty-seven million dollar general fund budget, and, and the other total budget's what, seventy-some thousand?
Yeah, overall.
So I mean, I mean, it's less than one hundredth of one percent.
I mean, we talked about the criteria for why, what we should be grading these against, right? They need to be criteria that we put forward. They were worth a lot to us last year, and I think that they drive foot traffic into really critical areas of town, so I just, if some, I mean, if someone feels strongly against them, I would just like to know why, if you're willing to share. I'm just curious why they, I mean, what the change is.
I don't think there's a secret to my opinion, and it hasn't changed.
And, and, you know, you've been consistent.
Mine's zero to everybody in case somebody doesn't know. It's gonna stay that way.
I'll speak to the children's museum, because I'm sure as hell I'm not gonna speak to the other one. But, uh, I will say, uh, you know, I wanna piggyback off of what Tanya said, is that, you know, the children's museum, twenty-eight thousand people last year, uh, these, mostly these nonprofits gone here are basically like departments the town doesn't have. Um, and when you look at something like the children's museum, having twenty-five, excuse me, twenty-eight thousand kids and families coming through their doors, uh, a, a museum that moved to Christiansburg from Blacksburg, no less, I think it's a, a big mistake to not see the value in what they're doing for, for our, for our kids. So, you know, I, again, I, I think, just to echo, talk, echo Tanya's point, I don't know how you can devalue what they are doing, particularly in a year where they upped all of their services and their foot traffic post-pandemic. So, that's just, again, one organization I could speak on there for the Wonder Universe, but, you know, I'm just not thinking the logic on that one either.
Well, and, and, yeah, we, we made some adjustments last year when we capped every, beginning of this year, we capped everything at ten thousand. We were having years that we were paying, it was a hundred and forty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we were funding. And to cut that almost in half, doesn't make, I mean, from the, from the, the reasons that were put out here by Tanya and Casey, I mean, it would seem like we're telling both we don't want to hear.
I mean, it's already, it's already a big reduction, uh, from twenty-five thousand dollars in support to ten thousand, and eighteen thousand to ten thousand. And according to current policy, they're only gonna get to five of that three times in five years, so, I mean, so. But it does help a lot, and I think that they, it just, they bring a lot of value to being in town. I, I mean, I think we should support them both.
Mr. Bishop? Well, I have harbor with one, and I'm, I'm listening to both sides, and I'm leaning right now on one of them. I believe Wonder Universe, uh, museum, I think, well, people probably know how I voted. I voted two, I think, from, to give them funds. I'm sure there was four years repressed it, so everyone knows, voted. So I'm still leaning towards, I guess, Wonder Universe is still transferred out, to be honest with you.
No, yeah.
I see you're going, I see you're going.
I have young kids who have gone to the museum for years. It drove us into Blacksburg, and we would go to Blacksburg, we would eat there. Wait before council, we'd go, we'd eat, we'd hang out. I mean, we went to Blacksburg for the children's museum when it was in Blacksburg. People come to Christiansburg because the children's museum is here. And it's a big, I think, a big factor in increasing foot traffic in uptown and increasing people who wanna stay and have lunch, and either close a couple hours, it's a perfect time for people to take a break and go have lunch. And in my opinion, for us to not support cultural things that fill gaps that Christiansburg does not, you know, take care of, at, in a, in other ways, like, I think that that's a really important component of where our funding or our, um, community support dollars should be going.
Well, maybe that's what I'm missing, when I go in there, not keep, like, going through a mall, I don't see that much activity going on. Maybe it's the hours that I'm going versus when they are actually busy. But I just don't see that many people.
They have a lot of foot traffic in the, on the weekends and evenings, and then now during the summer.
Oh, my gosh, in the summer, it's gonna be crazy, yeah. But they're open a couple hours, and then they close, and they conduct a clean everything, and then they go over for hours. Uh, but, I mean, like, even during the winter, they have field trips that come through. So it's a, I mean, am I right? Montgomery Museum do field trips, you have a kid's corner, you're, I mean, it's documenting the history of Christiansburg. It's crazy to me that Blacksburg would contribute to the Montgomery Museum, and then Christiansburg would be, it, you know, the place it's located, and it'd be a special part of our town and us, saying, well, thanks for being here, but not thanks enough to get our support.
And are you against Wonder Universe?
I'm still on the fence.
Right, right, are you against them, let's say you don't. Right, but let's say if you don't fund them, then it was implied that you don't, you don't like them, that you don't wanna see them.
You were, I'm sorry.
It was implied, uh, that we don't like them if we don't fund them. Mike said it.
I mean, that's, that's, that's.
Everyone has Tanya's sort of.
Everyone has their opinion, I mean, you know, so, I'm still on the fence.
So would you want them to shut their doors and not be around?
You can't pick them out of the way. Yeah, let them shut the door. On the yard, you get out way, so.
All right, well, you're, we're way off topic, and I'm gonna stop it right here.
Ms. Hicks? I'm starting. That was both, Tanya, you gotta admit, you were going that way too, and Mike, you did.
Certainly I am. Ms. Hicks, museum, Wonder Universe?
I don't, I'm not saying that I know why anybody says that they wouldn't want to fund it, and I, I'm not presuming to know that. I'm, I, if anybody's interested in sharing why they wouldn't want to fund it, I would be interested in hearing that, because I think that would be helpful for others, just early for everyone to make their decisions. It's fine to not share, obviously. But I am curious why everyone, why they were supported at such a high amount last year, and that they increased their value, and they are not supported at much lower enough this year.
Last year, I tied vote over the majority, I mean, I don't, I mean, I know that's in the party.
I can't answer that, 'cause I can't get my. I brought this up here so I could get to stuff, but apparently that's not being allowed today.
What, what's not being allowed?
I can't get on the internet to, I can't get on the network to get to my file.
So, is there interest on council to fund the museum?
I guess, Tanya, I guess, Tanya, you're asking for an explanation from each one of us. So this year, I was gonna go like ten. I thought it was very liberating to go with none, because we spent probably three-quarters of our time on the budget talking about this, which is what we're getting right now. So I thought it was very liberating when Mr. Wilson came and council said, I'm not gonna, not that you didn't support everybody, it's that you're not gonna award grants to them. And, you know, it's, do I appreciate meeting them? Absolutely. I appreciate Wonder Universe. And this year, I actually contemplated on, on not, um, submitting my vote to not support any, to sort of liberate these organizations from having to go to government and getting taxpayer funding. Like, that was, but I decided I was gonna stick with things that apply to, or I, these services that apply to our, at least my impression, and you can all, you guys can all disagree with me on what I support up there, but I, I do think childcare or after-school childcare is very important, um, and we're losing a lot of that, it's been a top of the conversation, so it forces the boys and girls to help those parents. You can't afford to sit and dedicate to a massively expensive childcare after-school or, or program of, you know, classes. Uh, the community health center, the free clinic, self-explanatory, right? Because people doesn't have, don't have insurance in our community, they can go down there and, and get healthcare, right? That's why it's called a free.
To an, to an extent, yes.
Yeah, to an extent, but, because people don't have health insurance. Okay, uh, good Samaritan hospice, do I have to explain that? You know, we see it every day in our elderly, that they help them have a honorable death when they commit. Literacy volunteers, I think everybody has a right to choose or get help to read. Um, Maquis, we, we've heard about this all through COVID. People who can't, uh, you know, people who either lose their jobs or have a hurdle in their life. I wanted to give them some sort of relief in their utility bills. Um, and then, of course, a homeless intervention, uh, family shelter, people, you know, families who lose where they live, so. I sort of just, I, kind of, New River Agency on Aging, child advocacy, advocacy. Those are the things I concentrated on this year. Not that I, I support all the organizations up there, and I hope they do great, but, um, my hope is one day we can liberate all these organizations into, into earning their own funds, so the council doesn't have to spend three-quarters of the budget I was talking about. But, I do support them, but this year, I just chose the organizations which I felt like benefit the people, really need some relief.
I was like, Mr. Shaw, I think, there is, it comes down to necessities for me, and I think a lot of the, you know, these organizations, but I believe they're great, they're wonderful, every single one of them is wonderful. Agency on Aging is one of the ones that I have supported from time I came in here, I think they have done a really good job, it's a necessity. When I saw what I was talking about, those necessities are very important now. You know, I feel like a lot of this should be actually on the county, you know, once again, we don't got a lot of money in this budget. They came over there and asked for the support. I know that a lot of these organizations, I'm sure they go over there, the museum has gotten money from them, and we have supported them a lot in the last years, and I think, you know, um, I think necessities are very important to me right now, and I think right now we just need to run the town in, and the necessities that need to be taken care of.
So I still have.
Public safety and quality of life.
So I have, at this point, when we're discussing the increase of the museum and Wonder Universe, I still have three solid nodes, is that correct? And one extension from the musi, from the museum. Do I have any other extension from?
At this time?
Okay, so we're not funding the, that's the intention? All right, so be it. Uh, what's next on the agenda?
That's it. So we've kind of talked a little bit throughout our discussions, so I'll go back and I'll make all the updated changes. Um, a couple things, a, a couple other changes that we know about. Um, we hadn't approved Amendment Three when this budget was drafted, so I'll bring Amendment Three into it, which was, that was a couple of grants that we brought in, all special revenue funds, where revenue equals expenditures. Um, and then there was the Arrowhead sewer project that we pulled forward, seventy-five thousand dollars of what was in twenty-four budget into twenty-three. So I'll make all those adjustments. Um, we also, at this juncture now, as we approach into May, are finding a few capital items that, um, police department ordered three patrol cars last July. They are not here yet, and they are not gonna be here before June thirtieth. So we'll go ahead and roll those. They'll probably get here July or August, um, so it'll be pretty early in the year. Um, and the minute budgets are approved, I know they'll go ahead and order the new ones, because the lead time and the availability of some of this stuff is just absolutely horrendous.
Did he say what?
Any answer on that?
Other than, you know, that's an industry-wide issue right now, for, for, intercept for packets.
So, I mean, that's the only really big one I, I'm aware of, and potentially the renovations on front of the PD building, because we're getting that started pretty late, so we'll probably end up rolling over a few of those funds. But anything that's a rollover is just money that's already committed in the twenty-three budget that we're saying, eh, we're not gonna spend it in twenty-three, we're gonna roll it into twenty-four. So that'll be pretty much the only changes that'll be, um, being made, and we'll, um, get those all done. Would you guys like another packet after that? Um, or wait until you approve it, and then I'll give you the final, final, final packet?
I have a question before we come down to that one. Um, as far as the Pasea grant, I know there has been no meetings this year for central business. I requested days for whatever the case, the case of the boat company, and nothing has happened. And there has really not been any meetings regarding this, so I don't know, you know, the timeframe, it was probably around April. I know the last time, because we're working on mission statements and things like that, I, I'm obviously still giving them the chance to be able to, you know, run the, the group, but as far as right now, nothing has been down this year for that. So I guess my question is, you know, I know that some of the businesses that we gave the money to have done great job with it. One of those being the candle store, I think, is absolutely amazing, and that was the Pasea grant, why it was created for. And then another one, I saw the other building by the Antiques and Ma, well, it's not Antiques and Ma, I'm sorry, the one down by Cambria, which is really getting nice renovations. I didn't see the old Cambria, uh, train station getting anything done. Maybe Andrew can tell me a little bit more about those and stuff, but as far as the Pasea grant this year, how is that gonna work as far as the rolling? Was the money from two years ago that was not used, put back into budget for, for the budget money, or where?
It was in, for, we rolled the twenty-five into last year's budget, and I think, Andrew, you gave me thirty thousand for next year. That's what's in for five grants for next year.
So that, that, it's rolled over, so it's, it's in the reserve, basically.
Can we just make it a twenty-five and all together every year for now until we figure this out, because we, unless something changes? Because the, unless something changes, I mean, that shouldn't be rolling money, that should be just money put back into the budget, in my own, in my feelings.
Isn't that reserved?
No, no. If, if, if it's not expended, it falls to find balance, unless we specifically roll it over.
I thought it was twenty-five again this year.
I thought I just ran across it today, and I thought it was thirty, I don't know why. It's either twenty-five or thirty.
Because we, we had still requested the five awards, you know, for...
All right, so five works, but then nothing has been, and we were going to discuss last year about regarding which side of town we were going to expand them in trip, and I guess we're taking that role right now. I would really like a meeting at the end, any day next week, after five o'clock, I'm good, except Tuesday for Tuesday town council meeting. And unless we have a county meeting with the county, I'm all open to the rest of the day to meet for that. Will that work with you?
Can I check?
So even if he doesn't, I am available, so.
At, at this point, we are not having a meeting, my understanding is we're not having a meeting with the county with the board supervisors on the third.
But we are supposed to send dates, and they're supposed to send us dates, correct?
I've asked for additional dates and times.
To an extent, I'm not going to drag this thing forever. We're going to get, we're going to get a decision one way or another when it comes down to it. Well, so the next steps, Val, I think you've already outlined those.
Yeah. So we'll have the, one more public hearing. Well, back up to the question I asked, do you want another, a new draft like this, or...
A paper?
Yeah. Of the next draft.
I want to find out in there, is, do you have, what's the updated information regarding the new park? And when is that going to open? Can you guys tell me? Because I know I...
So to answer your question, I, I don't need a paper copy, but, but a digital one that I can...
A PDF would be good.
Yeah, yeah.
I want a pretty quick copy.
Okay.
Randy, you were saying about the opening of the park?
I think we're going to take possession of it in the next few weeks. We, we are planning on having a ribbon cutting in June.
Do you have a date?
No doubt.
But, and I think I understood Brad to say that we will have a soft opening ribbon cutting in June.
You're going to have a grand, grand opening.
A grand opening in August or somewhere in that area with events and things going on. Just to get the park open and the ribbon cut will be sometime in, in June.
And all for, and all for the employees for this and everything, everything is on the budget already. Everything that you gave us is already included. We don't have to worry about making any additional changes in our budget for the new park, correct?
No, all the staff was, is already in the budget for the park.
And then you don't have to, you're not worrying about the, no sponsorship right now, right? Even if we didn't take like, things like what we got the other day, right?
Still working actively on, on grand stuff.
No, I'm not concerned about that.
I've reached out, I've reached...
Obviously, I'm concerned, I want more money back to the fund balance.
Need to play the lottery.
All right. Very good. Any other comments or questions? We are adjourned, thank you.